Good evening, welcome to the Wakefield School Committee meeting of Tuesday, March tenth, 2020. I'd like to reconvene our meeting. We did start an hour ago and had a one-hour executive session. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this law, with liberty and justice for all.
It is the vision of the Wakefield Public Schools to graduate students who are confident, lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. At this point, is there anybody from the public that would say to make a comment? Seeing nobody, student advisory council members. How are you ladies?
Good, how are you?
Very well, thank you.
So first, in the next few weeks, the sophomores have their first round of English MCAS. During this time, the seniors will be attending the Credit for Life Fair, which is, you know, an event where they kind of learn more about like the finance, finances, and you know, everything that happens after, you know, leaving high school. Term three is also coming to a close April third, so we have less than three weeks left. And also, it's actually tomorrow night Guidance is offering kind of a college night for students and parents of the juniors who will, you know, be the seniors next year. And lastly, there are a few new groups that are occurring during lunch that our school psychologists and the adjustment counselor have put together. Some of it's, you know, like mental health, anxiety and grief, and others, you know, is kind of like college planning, coping skills, and stress management.
And last Friday and Saturday was the senior show, and Adriana and I were part of that. And it was just a lot of fun, and I know a lot of us were really stressed out about it because it was kind of disastrous leading up to it, but we really pulled it out. And it's just a great bonding experience for the whole class, like as one of our last things before the year ends.
Next week on Monday, spring sports will start, so I know everybody's getting ready if it's like captain's practices, just to try to get in shape before those start for tryouts. But I think we're all pretty excited, the nice weather, too.
The weather's cooperating.
Yeah.
Yesterday was beautiful. Um, next, the, oh, the school trips, we've been, this has been pretty much a big buzz around the high school right now because a lot of people are not sure because of the coronavirus. But the Italy and Greece trip was canceled, they just found out. So a lot of people are sad about that. They understand, so rather be safe than sorry, I feel like.
Is everybody getting their deposits back?
I, we don't know.
I feel like some of it.
I can fill some of that in.
Yeah.
The two of us are also in the Swiss Exchange Program, so we're waiting the decision about that. Our, yeah, it is looking doubtful right now. But our teacher, who is taking us on it, has been updating us by the week, so we'll probably hear about that soon. But we're really sad about it. And then the Spring Musical has been in the works. I'm pretty, it's Chicago, I think. Yeah, and I know auditions is.
The girls have started this week.
Oh, awesome. Okay. It's Chicago, though, right?
Okay, awesome.
And another thing that's coming up next week on the half day is Warrior Give Back Day that the Student Council put on. And it's just an opportunity for the Student Council members and other students to go to local businesses or the YMCA to volunteer. And I've been a part, I'm not a Student Council member, but my friends are, and I'm on their team to go volunteer. And it's a lot of fun and just a good way to give back. And then on Friday, the junior class is holding a dodgeball tournament fundraiser, which kids have been talking about. And it's, you have to, I think you have to pay money to like make a team. And it's just a good fundraiser for their class.
Are you on a team?
No, I have to work. I'm really upset about it.
I think some teachers are having, like, they're on a team, too.
Yeah, there's a big, yeah, there's a big teacher team that everyone's talking about. So I'm sure it'll be a lot of fun. I'm really sad I can't.
Who's on the teacher team?
Mr. Tolios, Mr. Cummings, Mr. Leahy, Mr. Giantaccio.
I think so.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Zofis is on it.
They're taking this seriously.
Yeah, very seriously. So, yeah, I think that's all of our updates.
Okay. Do you know the dates for Chicago?
Um, May second, third, and then the weekend after, two weekends. It's here at the high school.
Good. Oh, not.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any questions? Uh, Steam Night's coming up, is it not?
Oh, yeah.
That's the Steam Night.
Mm-mm.
Okay, so that's this Thursday, right?
Yeah.
So, okay. It's another big night, so. Great, great. Well, thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job.
If we move on to our consent agenda, please.
Uh, move that the school committee approve the minutes of the February twenty-fifth, 2020 School Committee meeting, and accept the minutes of the February twenty-fifth, 2020 School Committee Policy and Communications Subcommittee meeting as presented.
Okay. I did call Judy today. I did notice one small error in the minutes that she's going to correct. It only, it's just the minutes state that Mr. Sheraldi gave a report that he sent in. He didn't come. That was the only correction I had. So motions been made in seconded. All those in favor? Okay, that would be unanimous. I'm gonna be really clear with the votes, so that when Judy does the minutes off the recording, she'll know. Budget items.
So tonight you have the monthly financial report through February twenty-eighth, 2020. We're carefully watching a couple of line items. Extraordinary maintenance line is slightly over due to some items at some of the schools that we needed to repair at the last minute. And also, the special ed tuition line is slightly over due to some encumbrances for tuitions, but we're still in line with our encumbrances. We're gonna watch those invoices as they come in, and at the end of the year, probably make some adjustments for year-end transfers. But overall, we're in good shape, still with all salaries in comfort for the year.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any changes in grants or anything?
Well, we, we just got notified this week. We have two small amendments coming up for Title II A and for Title I, almost $3,000 in extra funding. So we'll be doing those amendments by next week.
Okay. Any questions?
I just have one. I ask this, I feel like, all the time for public transportation line, number eight, the 115,000.
Pupil transportation.
Yes, sorry.
Okay.
115,000, that's a transfer from the dues that we collect for transportation. It helps fund the line.
So it's always in the reports, though, so why is that?
It's a transfer. So it shows you what the original appropriation was.
Okay.
And transfers to date.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
And that's, that's the line that gets, actually has a vote at town meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. We also have the payroll report for February. And then we also have a gift for you to, to vote to accept for, from the Friends of Wakefield High School Hockey.
Okay, move that the school committee approve payroll warrants, number thirty-two and number thirty-four, as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion's made in seconded. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor. Was that a yes, Colleen?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, so all those are unanimous? Okay.
Uh, move that the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of $2,000 from the Friends of WHS Hockey, stipend for the assistant coach for the 2019-2020 winter season.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion's made in seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That would be unanimous. Does that conclude your?
Yes.
Good. Thank you. In general, I, for comments, I do want to thank the superintendent for really doing an outstanding job at keeping the public informed as this, about the steps that the schools are doing with this whole coronavirus thing going around. I feel like, you know, we're fortunate nothing's happened here, but I feel like you're going out of your way to keep everybody informed as to what's being done, to be prepared. We have a bunch of policies that came across my email, oh, probably five, six weeks ago, I'm guessing. And it's just because there were a lot of mandates from the state to change policies. So I did forward that to our policy subcommittee, and they've been working very hard, and they've got a lot of work done. So I want Susie to explain what these are, and you know, we'll put them on the table.
Okay. Do you want me to explain them before we put the motion? Do we have to motion to put them on the table?
You can do that. Go ahead, make the motion, then we can explain them, sure.
Did we write a motion?
No, we didn't.
Okay. You want to write a motion quick while I explain them?
Sure.
Sorry. So we've got four policies that you guys should have in your packet. Three of, actually, three of them, actually, we have five policies that are in front of you. Four updates that came from the state, three of which were not policies that we had in our policy book. So the three that are new are the Educational Equity Policy, JBB, the Educational Opportunities for Children in Foster Care, which is policy JFABF. And that seems to have come out of the homeless policy. They've pulled out foster care as a separate policy. And then Educational Opportunities for Military Children, which is JFABE. So those are three new policies that the, the language came directly from MAS, sorry, MASC, not E. And so we will be, these aren't changes, these are just new policies that we're adding to our policy book at the recommendation of the state. There is also pretty major updates to the Homeless Students Enrollment Rights and Services Policy, which in our current policy book is policy 1013-r. It has a new policy number of JFABD, coming from the state. And that has pretty much been totally rewritten. I think there's a lot of kind of the same thoughts in it, but when you look at it kind of side by side, they're, they're different and updated in many ways that probably aren't worth kind of going through what the changes are. But the new policy is, again, coming from the state. In having read a little bit about it, it's, it's talking about giving kids the right to stay in schools when changes are happening to their status, and just making that kind of, trying to make the best situation, the situation the best that it can be for a student. And so they've changed some policies of kind of how that is handled. There's also some stuff about transportation in there. So that homeless students enrollment rights and services is existing, but we're proposing a new policy that's based on the state's guidance. So those were the four that, Chris, you had sent to me saying, hey, let's take a look at these. And then the, the subcommittee had already been working on the responsible use of technology. And so there is an existing policy, which is 1106-e. It is long, and it continues to be long. But we made some changes to it. So we made some updates. I'm gonna quickly walk you guys through what paragraphs kind of changed so that when you're looking at it, because it's not, it's not redlined, it's not marked up. So the, it starts out around vision. That language is generally the same implementation, has some additional language in it. Student email permission is the same, general email, online chat guidelines are the same. Content filtering is the same. Monitoring privacy has some added language kind of at the bottom of that section. User access and explanation of guideline has some language change in both the top and the bottom. Scope of Technology Policies has some added language. Consequences for Violation of the Policies has added language. Unacceptable Uses of Technology Resources, which is a very long list of bullets, is generally the same, other than one bullet being added that says illegal or criminal activities, which seems obvious, but they wanted to put that in there. And then due process, there's a little bit of added language. The Limitations of Liability has some added language and revised language. So there is some pretty, while I would say that the general gist of the policy has stayed the same, we've added some language just to cover some very specific needs in Wakefield and, and given some legal guidance on kind of how to, to handle certain things. The last two pages of the policy, the document that you guys have are the, are the parts of the policy that the students and parents need to sign. Actually, it's, the parents are signing it. Actually, it's parent and student, excuse me. And this is generally the same, but there is some added language in this as well. So this, this is, that's the majority of the work we did. What we also did was create a, a simplified version of this, very simplified, for elementary school children to sign off on. So when you look at the last two pages of the policy, that's the kind of middle school, high school kids. But we've created something else that isn't really a policy, it's more of a procedure and implementation. But it's the, it's for parents to sit down with younger kids to explain what is acceptable use and what is not acceptable use. Because this, no elementary school parent is going to try to read, first of all, with their child, right? So we also have that, but that's part of more of kind of the implementation, so it's not policy, which is why we're not laying that on the table. But I did want to mention that that has been also developed and will be used going forward. You know, the idea was, this is dense, right? You've got multiple pages of policy here. But there's lots of, of situations that we want to kind of call out and be very clear about what is acceptable and what is not. Any questions? Actually, am I allowed to take questions, or am I not? Because I'm really just laying them on the table. Okay, no questions.
Well, questions start now, though, and then in two weeks, people can ask more questions before we vote to accept.
Okay, yeah. So we're really just laying this on the table for consideration. The intention is to vote at the meeting on the 24th, to put all of these kind of forward.
Okay. We're ready.
Okay. Move that the school committee place on the table policy 1106-e Acceptable Use, JBB Education Equity, JFABD Homeless Students Enrollment Rights and Services, JFABE Educational Opportunities for Military Children, JFABF Educational Opportunities for Children in Foster Care, to be voted on in two weeks, as presented.
Second.
Okay. Motion's made in seconded. So you'll have two weeks to digest, think about questions you might have. The public will also have two weeks to comment, and then we will have this on our agenda for a vote to adopt. Okay? All those in favor? That would be unanimous. Okay. In your packet, I just included a form that we're gonna be posting, because Richard Greif is not seeking a reappointment for the Human Rights Commission. His term is expiring. So we need to appoint a new person. I just wanted to let you know that that is the form that the town has for us to, to file. If you have anybody that's, you know, interested to, to serve in that, in that capacity, let me know. I don't have anybody in mind at all, but we do need to have a new appointment for that commission. And since Mr. Chines is here, he has a request for some, a volunteer from our committee to serve on a project he's working on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I won't take too much of your time. I know you have a busy agenda tonight, but just appreciate being able to come here and talk for just a minute about the work that we're kicking off to develop a vision and value statement for Wakefield. So, you know, listening to the beginning of the meeting, one of the first things that you hear after the Pledge of Allegiance is the recitation of the Wakefield Public Schools' vision statement and mission statement. And, you know, as a resident, as a member of town government, one of the things that I've seen is that the school committee and the school department do a really effective job of using that as kind of a north star for how you guide your decision-making, how you guide your decisions around budget, around policy, and things like that. And that's something that actually doesn't exist for the town as a whole. And so the goal is really to come up with something that will help us as a community identify our overarching priorities and make the trade-offs that unfortunately we all have to make in the, in the form of, of making our decisions from a government standpoint. Couple of components to the process that we'll be seeing. One is there'll be significant community engagement. We will have a couple of surveys going out, including one in the next couple of weeks, asking residents how they might want to engage in the process. There'll be focus groups, community forums, things like that. We're looking to bring in an outside facilitator to help organize the process, or in the process of applying for a technical assistance grant to fund that. And then the third component is a committee of different leaders in town who will help take all these ideas that we generate and really form them into something coherent. And that's really the ask that I, I'm here today about. One of the representatives that we'd love to have on the committee is a representative from the school committee. Given that sort of the schools are such a big part of what we do as, as a community, they're such a big part of our mission as a town, as I see it. And so we'd love to make sure that we have the perspective of the school committee represented there. And so my ask today is to see if we can get a representative appointed to help us with that process and serve with the other individuals who'll be part of that group.
Do you have any sense of what kind of a time commitment that will be?
Yeah, I expect that it will probably be roughly a monthly meeting for the next six to eight months. You know, certainly there'll be other public events that we have, which, you know, if people can participate in those, we'd love that as well, and that's open to folks outside of the community. But the big lift for the committee itself is helping us really conceptualize what's the order of events that we'll have to engage with the public at large. And then again, taking the ideas that get generated and really working together to form that into a coherent statement that we can then present to the community for reaction.
Okay. And you need, when do you plan on starting?
So we'd like to get the committee to meet initially, I would say, in the next month or so.
Okay. So we have two weeks to think about it?
Sure.
Okay. Because I wanted the committee to hear about what, what it is you're trying to accomplish, and see if, you know, who might feel so they have the time to volunteer.
Absolutely. And, you know, I'm happy, outside of the meeting, over the next two weeks, if anyone has any questions or would like to talk through what we have in mind, happy to touch base offline if, if you'd like to do so. Reach out anytime.
Okay, great. Any questions, Mr. Chines, on that one?
Just a quick one. Who will be the other members of the committee?
Sure. So we've put together, and I apologize, I don't have the list in front of me, but, you know, we've put together a list of representatives from various boards and commissions in town. So there'll be representation, representation from the, the town council, the school committee, the planning board, the Board of Appeals, Commission on Disabilities, Human Rights Commission, as well as a couple of others that I'm sure I'm forgetting. But that, that's a big chunk of the, the membership. We also are going to be pulling in a representative from the Chamber of Commerce, a representative from the Council on Churches, and then a couple of employed members of the town administration to help keep everything moving.
Okay. Sounds great.
Thanks.
And, and some youth voices, do I?
That's the hope. Now that we've actually approved the, the youth council, that is actually something that I'd love to add. Again, every part of the process is going to be open to the public, and
Right.
We will be having a lot of opportunities for people outside of this committee to engage. But, you know, now that we've started this youth council, thanks in part to your, to your inspiration, I think that'd be a great voice to add to, to the group as well.
Great. Thanks.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll be sure to add it to our agenda for a volunteer, the appointed at our next meeting.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And last but not least, as you recall, when, we had our workshop with MAS C and with Mrs. Presser, one of the things we talked about was trying to make sure we developed a handbook for new school committee members to help introduce them to, you know, the norms that we have and procedures and whatnot. And so now Mrs. Veier can put on her communications hat. You've been working on that as well.
Yep. So that's, so Doug is working on getting a draft of a school committee handbook together, kind of using a couple of different communities that Dorothy Presser provided to us as, as guides and, and examples, but to then kind of make it our own and add, like you said, Chris, kind of the operating procedures that we've come up with and some other things that are very specific to Wakefield. The goal is to bring that forward to the group next meeting on the 24th. We don't believe that that's anything that we need to vote on. We kind of look at that as a, a living and breathing document that we'll kind of add to. But as, as our, with our communications subcommittee hat on, it felt like it was time for us to kind of get something like that together. We've got a new, you know, we've got an open seat with a new member that will be coming in come April or May. And so it felt like now was the right time to get, at least get that first draft going. And so I think the intent is to share it, to get feedback of what else could we add to it, and kind of how do we, how do we get at least a first good draft going.
Great. So we've got several items to add to our agenda for next meeting. Okay, that would be it for, for me. Move on to Mr. Lyons.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Comments and updates. And so I think, as most of you know, because I've communicated with the committee via email, for probably the last seven or eight days, there's been a good amount of time in, in every one of those days that has been spent talking about coronavirus or COVID-19. And so as of last Friday, first of all, if we back up even more, last, last week, we convened a group with the town leadership, I think it was on the, it was in the newspaper, I think yesterday, just to, just to meet and talk about what's happening throughout the state. And, and at that point in time, there were very few cases of, of the virus that was, you know, being seen throughout the state. And it's quickly increased. And as of Friday of last week, I think that there were 12 cases. As of Saturday, there were 15, 16, 17. And as of Monday, there were 20. And today, there are 20-plus. And so there's, the first student case was in Arlington at Stratton Elementary. And so that school is open today, but was closed yesterday for cleaning. And so we are working very, very closely with the Wakefield Board of Health, with the director, Ruth Clay. So we've been in touch with her daily. And we've also kind of consulted the Mass Department of Public Health and the CDC to kind of develop guidelines and how best to advise teachers, students, and administrators to help students stay safe and healthy. You know, we're, we're trying to advise our elementary students and our preschool students to, you know, cough and sneeze into a sleeve. We're trying to encourage parents, if their sons or daughters are ill, to keep them home. And we're also keeping really close track of, of attendance. And at our elementary schools, our nurses have kind of headed up an initiative to really help classes and kids wash their hands as groups. So we're kind of teaching kids to wash their hands, and kids are starting their days washing their hands. And our nurses have been terrific at really educating and teaching and supporting students and teachers during this time. And so that, that's one part of this, just in regard to being in a prevention space. Other things that we're doing is we're, we're cleaning. Bob Shiroli brought electrostatic cleaners into the district before they became a thing. So we've had them in district for a little while. Now they're, they're being sold for exorbitant prices on the internet because Now they're being sold for exorbitant prices on the internet because they're in such high demand. But what they are is they are kind of misters. They kind of spray, and when the spray dries, it disinfects and kind of kills germs on surfaces. So between our electrostatic cleaners and our custodians trying to keep up with and clean surfaces and high-touch surfaces, doorknobs, desks, they're chipping away at that. We've also allowed for an overtime piece so that we can try to work with teachers if there are students in classes that have particular needs or if there are some tough-to-get-to areas. We're going to spend some extra time on cleaning. Other things that we're doing, and so we've been in very close contact with North Reading Transportation around how the buses are being cleaned. For our buses in district, we're actually going over those top to bottom. Our bus drivers in district have been fantastic. They've spent extra time. They've been flexible. And they're really doing a nice job. And so that's a piece. And so the other, the other parts of this that are kind of changing by the day, we just got word recently that all international trips should be canceled. That's the advice from the governor. And, you know, and I think what's happening in parallel to that is I think we're looking at local domestic trips on a case-by-case basis. So in the United States, there are some geographical areas that are kind of making a determination that they're in a state of emergency, New York City being one, and we have a middle school trip to New York. So our middle school principal, Adam Colontoni, was letting parents know this evening. I think he was getting a letter home, just that New York is in a state of emergency, so we need to respond accordingly. We're also actively working with our travel companies on their reimbursement and refund policies. And so, and we're really asking them to be flexible under the circumstances and the demands that are changing so quickly day to day. So the other piece that is also changing is that the advice that we're getting from the Mass Department of Public Health, that will go to Ruth Clay, that will come to us, there'll be an update tomorrow morning on this, is, you know, around gatherings. And so, you know, we're seeing some, some local districts, I know Watertown and Waltham have scheduled some large band events, music events, that they would have had a couple thousand people at. And so that, those were changes that were made yesterday, and we're seeing some changes happening today. We're also seeing some changes happening with colleges and universities across the country for faculty and staff that are, that are old enough to have children that are college age, like Christine and I, our children are at the same school. We're waiting for our children to be sent home from, like other schools and colleges are, they're just saying, "Don't come back from spring break. We'll finish the semester online." And so that's, you know, I think some students are more aware of this than others. And Christine's daughter is probably highly aware of this. My son is not aware of this. And so it's just a little difference there.
Giving back their room and board fee, right?
Yeah, that's a great question. And so, but, but really, we are really just trying to be as responsive as we can be to support students, faculty, and staff. This also brings up a lot of anxiety for people in our community, okay? We have a number of students that have compromised immune systems. We have faculty that have some health issues. And so, and we also have faculty that are taking care of parents and relatives that have medical issues. And so this is a complicated event, and we really just want to be thoughtful. I've been fortunate, and I've met with Will Kevin Aris, our WEA president and teacher leader. We've met almost daily and been in touch to really just think about what people need, right? And so one of the questions that we've gotten is, is Learn Anywhere, can we use Learn Anywhere if we needed to close schools? And so the short answer is yes. But what we're seeing is, you know, right now, when you see school closures or a district closure, that's for cleaning, okay? And the state isn't advising, you know, whole districts to be shut down just to clean. For example, I used, I shared that there was a student in Arlington that became, was tested positive for COVID-19, and so they shut down that individual school for a day, and then the school is back in session. So I think at this point in time, this could change. This could change. But at this point in time, I think what we might see is, you know, a cluster where, you know, if we have a student or a faculty member that might, that may test positive, we would need to respond. Those peoples or persons would need to be self-quarantined. We would keep track of that, and then we would clean a building. In the event that we did need to close the district, we could use Learn Anywhere. We've heard that from the Commissioner of Education. So that's a very positive thing. But again, we're just taking this kind of day by day, and I know that we'll have an update tomorrow morning just in regard to gathering in larger groups. But that's where we're at at this point in time. I don't know if anyone has any questions?
I'm just on the group point. So, so far, we haven't decided to sort of back away from unnecessary events, right? Everything will go as planned unless advised otherwise.
Right. So what we've been advised to do is to consult with our local Board of Health and Mass DPH. And we haven't, as of, so we met as an administrative group today with the town leadership. And the word at, you know, 2:45 today is that we're moving forward. I know the governor had a press conference shortly thereafter, which I think is going to give us cause to update that by tomorrow morning. But that's where we're at right now. So as of 2:45 today, events are on.
Ever-changing.
Yeah, it's an ever-changing landscape, but yeah.
Thanks, Doug.
Sure. Okay. So one of the most important things that I, again, I think we need to do is just control the controllables and be kind of a steady, calming presence for our students. I can tell you, I've been in almost every school, and our kids, especially our youngsters, they seem to be completely unaware and completely happy with the new routine of washing their hands. It's a new, it's just a new, new thing we're doing. And so it's terrific how flexible they are. And so I think they're good models for us, so.
Too bad we couldn't take some data on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Increased hand washing.
Increased hand washing, yeah. And so, but that's where we're at. And again, I'll keep everyone up to date as soon as information changes or that I have new information. And so next up, Christine Befager and I would like to share the FY '21 proposed school department budget. We can do it from this table or we can do it from that table. What do you think's better, Chris?
What's easier for you?
I think we can stay here. Yeah. Just need that clicker.
Next gentleman's going to give you a clicker, you'll be all set. Where do you point it is the question.
I think we, I hope, there we go. So, do we have an additional copy?
Yeah.
Thanks. And so, so this is a, this is our proposed budget. And so the objectives of our slideshow this evening is to review our budget timeline, to talk a little bit about what we do to collect information and how we prioritize that information. So we do face-to-face meetings. We take information via email. We do coffees. There's a number of different ways that we collect information and data to kind of get things onto the table and to find out how things are working in our school system. So I'll talk a little bit about that as I go through the slides. I'm going to present, based on the information that we've collected, I'm going to share what our budget priorities are and positions that we're looking to add in this budget. I'll actually present the increase that we are proposing. And then there'll be some time at the end for questions and answers. And so the FY, in FY '21, right, what's really important to note, I think that this is one of our most important slides. We often hear that the school budget is so large. And people are correct, right? Our last year's budget, our FY '20 budget, we're presenting FY '21. But our FY '20 budget was $42 million, right? And people will often say, "That's a terrifically large budget, and we, you know, we want to know more about it." I think one of the most important things that you need to know is that, that this budget, in the proposed budget, will fund a faculty of 567 adults that work in seven bargaining units to educate 3,510 students, okay? And that's in grades preschool, pre-K, to grade 12, and also post-academy, right? There are a number of people that don't know that we have a post, what we call post-academy, which is a small school over in Greenwood that is in our space, and we run it in collaboration and partnership with Reading to educate students 18 to 22 years old, where we do functional academics, life coaching, and job coaching. It's really one of the best things that we do. It was prudent to kind of build out that space, and we're actually, I'm actually very pleased that we're able to offer that to students that need that. We also have pre-K and full-day K in this budget. Someone asked me earlier today if Wakefield has full-day K, and of course, we do. And I think most people know that. So when we build a budget, you know, we build it with an architecture in mind. It's built and driven by the Wakefield Public Schools instructional strategy and also our core values. We want our budgets, year over year, to include feedback from staff, parents, and community members. It's a critical, critical piece for us. It's not just about leadership. It's about being able to hear what teachers need, to hear what the community needs, and to be responsive to those needs, right? We want to support our public school system's trajectory toward improvement and excellence. And the last bullet, which is, I feel like I can't say enough, we want our budgets, and our budgets will be fiscally responsive to the needs of our students and our teachers, and sustainable year over year, right? We're not looking to get, you know, win a large budget, and so much so where the following year, we can't fund our budget and that we have to make cuts. That's kind of regressive. You know, we're not interested in creating those types of things, and this budget certainly is not that. So this is the budget timeline. The text is a little small, and I apologize for that, but there's a lot happening in the calendar for us to prepare for the budget. It really starts in late September, early October, and this presentation tonight is kind of a benchmark and kind of a culmination of a lot of that work, okay? But in November, we collect capital requests, and we present that information to the town. From October to January, Cara Morrow, our assistant superintendent, and I will make our way around to all of our schools and meet with faculty and staff. We'll have coffee feedback sessions. So there's an opportunity to talk to people face-to-face. If faculty are unable to attend a coffee meeting, we certainly welcome any feedback in any form that they can give. So often, they'll send us an email. If someone misses something, you know, Will Kevin Aris will often send a clarifying note, or he'll be a bridge to that information as well. And so in December, this past December 17th and 18th, principals and directors, all of our school principals, presented, and our directors, our athletic director and our fine and performing arts director, Tom Bankard, present their budgets. So they come into a room and it's, and they need to present their budget. They need to justify all of the positions. So if you're a principal, you'll have a list of faculty that are in your school, and all those positions, you need to explain, right? Who are they? What are we working on? What do you need? You know, it's not just a blind ask where people can come in and say, "I need three new teachers." You know, you have to qualify that statement. And so I think principals and our directors have become really good at really being thoughtful about not just blind asks, but really qualifying the ask. The asks are often based in data and student information and student need, okay? And so that's a piece. So in January, we get out and meet with parents, and then we follow up. We'll do the State of the Schools presentation to give people just an update in terms of where we're at. Then what we'll do is we will get out surveys. This year, we sent out two surveys, one as part of our Student Services Subcommittee work, and the other one was a community survey that went to the entire, the entire community. I'll talk more about those as we move into the slideshow. But, and now we're here tonight to hear our proposed budget. Next Wednesday, the 18th, will be the public hearing. And on the 23rd, we're going to be presenting at Town Council. On the 24th is the school committee vote. And then on the 26th, we'll be presenting again for a second time at FinCon. So, that's the timeline. I suggested that earlier that our, the architecture that we use is our instructional strategy, starting with, and Jonathan Chines referenced this to start off, you know, this vision and mission is part of our instructional strategy, right? And so it's very intentional in terms of language, and it's language that guides us, right? And so Chris Callanan read this information to start our meeting. But again, it's, the Wakefield Public Schools graduates confident, lifelong learners who are respectful and caring members of their community, right? Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, one of the components of our instructional strategy, high-quality instruction, which correlates to quality teaching, and educational experiences that meet the needs and individual interests of students, right? So the first part of our instructional strategy is quality teaching. So there are a number of initiatives under quality teaching, but in an effort to just summarize what that means is the Wakefield Public Schools will build a budget that will support and promote quality teaching by recruiting, retaining, and developing exemplary teachers. We're super fortunate here in Wakefield to have such an exemplary teaching staff. We have the highest retention rate in the Middlesex League. Very proud of that. And I think it speaks to the commitment that the teachers have to Wakefield and also to their students. And I think it's, I don't think we can kind of share that enough. So the second part of our instructional strategy is to provide, bye, girls. Thank you. I think I'm driving them out with my presentation. And so... The second part of our instructional strategy is to really, it's guided by our curriculum and review cycle that is a functional part of Cara Morrow's annual work. So Cara is responsible for curriculum instruction and assessment. But we have a curriculum review and renewal cycle, which you'll be hearing more about for work that we're going to be moving into in the fall. You'll be hearing more about that in the spring. But that's a big part of our budget, right? And we have money dedicated to bringing in the best materials that we can for kids on an annual basis. And so not all districts have a curriculum budget structured the way we do that's also based in a review and renewal cycle, right? And a fundamental part of our review and renewal cycle is that all of the new curriculums that we bring in will have a technology component with it. So often, our new textbooks are digital. It will be research-based. It will be free of bias, and it will also be accessible to all students. A number of our new curriculums that we're purchasing are available in different languages if a student is a non-English speaker. A lot of them are differentiated to support different ranges of learners. So I think it's really been an important upgrade to our district in the last five years. And I think Cara and the curriculum coordinators have kind of taken that to a whole new level. So the third part of the instructional strategy is really meeting students where they're at, right? It's individualizing student learning, right? It's not just about what teachers know, how much content they know, and how much they can kind of preach to children. It's about how they can connect with children and meet them where they're at and really bring them into learning, right? And this premise is really based on inclusive practices that support equity, but it also supports student growth. A fundamental part of, of the third part of our strategy is student growth. A fundamental part of, of the third part of our strategy is student growth. Like, meeting students where they're at and thinking about how they're growing. Right? Not just an A is up here, and if you're not up here, then you might not even register on the scale. Right? It's about, okay, what is, what is each student doing to get better day by day? So we also, so this year, we gave a budget survey to the community. We had five hundred and sixty-nine responses, almost double the number of responses that we had last year. I'm particularly pleased about that. And so in, in years past, there's just been kind of a list of data. And we've just taken kind of the, the highest percentages of things to create priorities. And one of the things that we changed this year is we broke down, we, we kind of broke the surveys, the community survey, down to, to align with our instructional strategy. So part one of our survey was quality teaching. Part two is rigorous curriculum. So what you see on the screen are the three highest priorities that were highlighted in quality teaching. So what people reported, the five hundred and plus respondents, five hundred and sixty-seven, five hundred and sixty-nine respondents reported that the biggest need for, in, in the area of quality teaching is additional special education support, support in elementary science, and also support in reading at the elementary level. In, in the curriculum area, people have kind of prioritized science, technology, engineering, and math support, STEAM activities and STEAM, STEAM events. And that includes engineering, communicate, ah, excuse me. It includes engineering, and also includes computer science for students in grades three through twelve. So. The, the, the other two parts of the, the community survey was individual student learning. And what was highlighted there is really the need for additional math and reading support, as well as intervention services and counseling. Right? So last year, we were very fortunate in the budget to add counselors almost at every school at every level. And it's still showing up as a need. But I think we, as a group, need to be particularly, I know I am, very proud of the fact that we were able to prioritize direct service and provide the level of counseling support that we did last year. District priorities that have been highlighted are, you know, someone highlighted the digital learning specialist. Student learning time continues to be a priority. Right? And that, that has kind of shown up in different conversations in different ways. For some, it's, it's, you know, late start. For others, it's lengthening the school day. For others, it's changing the schedule. So that's something that we're going to continue to look at and talk about. One of the things that has come up as a priority for the, at the district level is a human resource director. We have five hundred and sixty-seven employees and no one person directly responsible for human resources, which is kind of unique. You think of a company that large that doesn't have an HR director. We, we get a lot done with the few staff we have, and we're proud of that. Additional positions, humanities coordinator, traffic supervisor. I don't know if we can cross this off because now we have police officers helping direct traffic out at the high school, which is a blessing and a challenge. The blessing is that it's tremendously orderly and safe. The challenge is everyone's late for school now. And, and so, you know, we have to take, take that.
That's not just me.
Yeah, no, it's not, it's not just you. And so, so we've gotten some spirited email communication about that. But we're really pleased that, and we appreciate the support from, from the police. So custodial help, you know, the irony in that we're talking about coronavirus. It would be nice to have a little more custodial help right now. And also, what was highlighted, and some of these priorities in the district list didn't come directly through the survey, but came through conversations and came through some of the information, the fill-in information, because there was opportunity for people to leave comments. There were several comments about the need to upgrade our wireless kind of structure at the high school. And that's part of capital, that's a capital priority this year. And I think we'll be able to report back more on that in the coming meetings. So. In our Student Services Subcommittee, I'm also pleased, this is a sep, this is separate survey data. So we surveyed students in grades five and nine. So what we wanted to do with our Student Services Subcommittee is to look at our transition years, to look at what students were thinking, feeling, saying, as they transitioned from grade four to five and from eight to nine. So we had fifty-seven students in grade five and nine that prioritized the four following things. They reported that they could have used some homework help. My guess is that that's grade five. Counseling support, STEAM offerings. Clubs and enrichment were, were a big, a big thing that students, you know, kind of commented about. And so I, I appreciate that feedback. For teachers, we had thirty-seven respondents in grade five and nine. They reported about student needing support with organizational help, counseling and special education support, writing support, as well as opportunities for internships or service work. And so parents also supported organizational support for students, counseling and special education help. So the acronym MSN is Moderate Special Needs. That is, that's a special education teacher or position. So if you see that, that's what that means. And they also highlighted internship service opportunities and writing support. When we see this correlation between groups, it's, it's really great for us because it gives us a pretty good target about things that we need to think about and about areas that we need to strengthen. Special education in 2020. Special education is a driver in every budget in every community in Massachusetts. Okay? We continue, and we are committed to, a philosophy that we have in our leadership teams, plural. Right? Is we continue to look at in-district and developing in-district programs to support all learners and to keep kids in our community. Okay? And in some districts, if they can't support students as young as preschool or grade, you know, K or one, sometimes if, if a, if a district can't support a student in district and they go out of district, if they go out at a young age, they often don't come back. Right? They often provide, they get the services that they need. And there are sometimes limitations in the services that we provide. Right? And, and we want to be genuine about that and how we support students and what students need. But our first position is to always ask the question, can we develop this in-house? Can we develop it in-district? So in this budget, we are proposing an expansion of special education positions to increase flexibility in elementary and middle school to support students in language-based programs and also in, to support students with social communication at the middle school level. So I'll talk more about that when we talk about specific additions. So we're also looking at program descriptions and how students are scheduled to see if we can't do that more effectively. Cara Morrow has worked very closely with Lynn O'Neil. And Lynn has kind of worked with Cara to develop special educa, excuse me, professional develop, professional development programming that focus on special education topics and instructional strategies to meet the changing needs of, of our students. So the budget priorities that we have come up with, I know I'm talking fast. If I, if, if anyone has questions, please, you know, slow me down and, and raise a hand. But the priorities, based on what we believe we, we need to prioritize this year. We know we can't do everything. We know we need to be flexible. Right? Again, like I said earlier, we're looking at building sustainable budgets year over year. So based on, on those things, the, what we're prioritizing in this budget is to, to add five FTEs. Right? Five full-time equivalents. And the list is, is broken out as we're looking at adding two science specialists. That's teachers at elementary in the FY21 budget. We'll be looking to add two more teachers in FY22. And the reason that we're looking to do that is so that these science specialists can support the teaching of science in grades three and four at least one day in a six-day cycle so that we're teaching science with more continuity at the elementary levels. We think that that will help students be more prepared for science when they enter middle school. We also think that it will create some space for our elementary teachers to work with data formatively and to also work in PLCs to meet the needs of, of students and to meet kind of their lesson planning needs and their work with data as well. So it, it kind of, it serves many populations or many audiences, the, the two FTE science add. Ideally, we would love to add four teachers, but we're trying to kind of make decisions that are prudent in regard to budgeting. So we're looking at staggering this increase into having two this year, two next year. We're also looking at adding one full-time equivalent at Dolbear in special education at, in our ASD program, in our autism program. That is a, is a growing program. Simeon Banks is the teacher in that program and is, you know, a gift from God. I think what he does for students is just so exceptional. And it's the type of thing where, you know, when you build a successful program, parents have confidence in the program, confidence in the school, and mostly confidence in the teacher. You know, they, they come. The, the challenge is when they come, the program grows, and that we need to support it differently. And so that's what that position is for. We're looking at adding a full-time equivalent at Galvin, which could support language-based needs. It could support social language needs and could support other in-class special education needs. And, and that depends on what, you know, Adam Collantoni, the leader in that building, is thinking about maybe moving some, some people around to best-serve students. And so there's some, some fluidity, but we know, we know that we need one FTE there to support people. The other full FTE, the 1.0, is broken up 0.5 and 0.5. So it's an additional 0.5 at Greenwood Elementary for our language-based program. We, we have an exceptional, exceptional language-based program, and our teacher in, in that program is just killing it. But like our, our program at Dolbear, you know, we're just busting at the seams and we need help there. And so we're going to be adding a 0.5 FTE to support, not only in the language-based program, but also other programs as well. There's a 0.5 that exists there, so there's 1.5 teachers. So this 0.5 will make a second full-time equivalent. Right? And so we're also looking at adding a 0.5 FTE at Doyle for speech and language. And so speech and language needs for our preschool students for early intervention is, is a high priority. It, it's important to note that other things that, that are included in this, this proposed budget is new support for teachers to work on instructional leadership teams in pre-K through four, a new nurse coordinator stipend, new funding for teachers to work with formative data. Right? And so that's connected to our, our science work. And so it's also, you know, to, to fund a new teacher contract, which we have yet to settle, but I think we're very, very close. And so there'll be more information forthcoming on that. And so it also supports a new transportation contract. Right? So one of the things that I wanted to include in this presentation is just to really think about the long view. Right? I talked about trying to plan budgets that can be sustained year over year. Right? So I wanted to include some bullets and just some things that we're thinking about and talking about. You know, I took a picture of our marching band, and I use this in the slide because, you know, we have one of the best, most accomplished, award-winning marching bands in the state. Right? But it took many years to build. Right? They, they kind of, they live in a culture of excellence. It didn't happen overnight. It takes time. So the picture is a little symbolic in that we're trying to do the same thing with our prioritization and budgeting that we're presenting tonight. But we're looking, some things that we're working on. We're looking to collaborate on a long-term, seven- to ten-year master plan for facilities that include a new high school, that include upgrading Greenwood in addition to the new roof. So that's a long-term plan. That'll be a ten-year plan. We're looking at creating a data and budget plan to accommodate learning-ready, learning, learning-ready facilities that will kind of meet the needs of our NEASC accreditation. So we have our accreditation at the high school. We're still accredited, but we're on probation because of the state of our facilities. So that's something that needs to be remedied. We also need to complete an enrollment study. You know, on the front page of the newspaper, reportedly six hundred units going in at the head of the lake. Now, I know that that's, you know, premature. I, I know that zone, I know that it's not zoned for that just yet. And so, but, but there's a lot of building happening in town. And one of the reasons why we want to complete an enrollment study because enrollment correlates to square footage if we're going to look at renovating, adding on to, or building a new high school. So we want to be prepared for that. We also need to be very genuine and about the rising costs of special education programming over time. We need to support the needs of our growing population of English-language learners. So the, the number of students has increased about 10% a year in the five years that I've been here for, for our English-language learners. We also need to be a little bit more up to speed in the computer science and STEAM offerings that we're offering our students. And we're also thinking in, for our high school students about early college opportunities. Right? We, we're, we're having a conversation and saying, you know, there's no reason why we couldn't have our students participating in an online college course just to gain some experience, maybe transfer some credits. There's no reason why, for students that are ready, that we can't have them complete some college classes and get some things done. It's also an opportunity for, for a range of students to do some different things that, that they're interested in that we not, we might not be able to offer here at the high school. And we also need to develop a plan to address achievement and opportunity gaps. You know, when, when students start behind, they stay behind. Right? We need to be very genuine about what that might look like in our community and how we're supporting those students. So I, I think that those are some philosophical things that you need to know that are part of the longer-term plan. Our budget proposal this evening is broken down into three areas. Personnel costs, operational costs, and special education costs that include out-of-district tuitions. And so for personnel costs, our proposed budget increase this year is 1.493 million dollars. That is 3.56% increase over last year. It includes an increase in stipends of 0.35%. But it also includes the new positions in science. So that 139,592 that you see that make up 0.33% is for those additional positions. So that's, so we're looking at an overall increased cost for personnel of 4.25%. For operational costs, I think Christine Bufagna, being our new school business administrator, has been really exceptional in this area in helping us kind of move things around and come in with an overall increase for FY21, over, over FY20, for an overall increase of 0.5%. I'm not going to read every single line, but that includes a new transportation contract. So that's kind of a, a job well done. It's probably an understatement. Thank you for that. Nicely done. So, and the third piece, which I think really deserves a lot of credit to Lynn O'Neil, our Director of Special Education, and her team, our, our special education coordinators at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. For special education out-of-district tuitions for a second year in a row, we're coming in under budget, which I think, I'm challenged to find another district in our area that is coming in under budget. is coming in under budget and, and out-of-district tuitions. I think that that really speaks to the, the programming that's being developed, but I also think it speaks to the, the quality of the work that the teachers are doing at all levels. So, so the $168,000 is for the three FTE add for special education. And so, so between the cost savings and the additional positions, the special education increase is .12%. So, you know, when you add up parts of the whole, the budget that we're proposing this evening is an increase of $2 million over last year. And it's a, by percent, it's an increase of 4.88%. And so, you know, one of the questions that we always get is, well, what is the increase to Chapter 70? Because it's, it's often looked at as a potential offset, right? If we're, if we're getting, you know, what, how does it look? How does it compare? So we don't have the actual number. We have the governor's preliminary information. So the FY '20 Chapter 70 was actual $6.72 million. The proposed preliminary number in FY '21 is 6.84, close to 6.85, which is only just a very moderate increase of $129,000. I know, I'm anticipating that that number is going to go up. I don't know how much at this point in time, but that will offset our 4% or 4.88. You know, $129,000 is about .3%. So it really kind of knocks us down about 4.5% increase. So that is our proposed budget. And I think Christine and I will be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
And we'll be putting a copy of this budget online tomorrow morning. You're going to be putting this document, which is much more detailed.
Correct.
Are you also going to be posting the PowerPoint?
Correct. Two for two.
Awesome.
Questions?
I just have one question about the Galvin 1.0.
Yep.
So you said language base and you also said social language needs.
Social communication, yeah.
So what is that? What is that? What does that mean?
So, we have students that have communication needs. And in the special education world, you know, social communication can look different for different kids. Some of our students need support in how they communicate and how they are able to kind of be aware of what they need. It's like pragmatics, right? It's being able to read a situation and respond, like social pragmatics. Being able to read a situation and respond accordingly to participate thoughtfully in their learning, to, for students to participate with others and to also kind of be able to initiate themselves and, and participate in their learning so that they can achieve, so that outcomes can be different, right? So, so that's a very specific area of, of support and coaching. And we know there's, there's student needs in that area. That's why it was highlighted.
Okay. So someone with like a language-based profile also may have those types of qualities as well?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Tom?
Uh, uh, thank you. And thank you to Doug and Christine and the entire team for what has been months of work, you know, leading up to tonight's presentation. And it has been, it, it's certainly, there's a, a lot goes, a lot goes into it and a lot goes behind it. And I certainly recognize, as I'm sure and hope that the community does, that this is not a, an exercise that isn't without a lot of heart and soul. Because the most important work that we're doing, of course, is working to continuously improve our teaching and learning and the capacities from which we can, which we can bring forward. So I thank you for, for this work. One of the things that I wanted, I have a couple of, have a couple of questions and a couple of points if I, if I could. One of the things I'd like to ask about, and you may not be prepared with slides, which is perfectly fine, or perhaps it's something to have for the next meeting, but all the things that aren't here, that I know that from the starting point that you have back in the fall, beginning with, with your immediate, the central office team and with program directors and building principals, you have a, a very open and candid conversation around the types of needs that, that are seen. There's input from teachers, inputs from associations, and obviously the senior, senior administrators. And I appreciate from the book, which, which of course we just got today, so I've obviously not studied it. But beginning on page 39 is, is the budget that you've presented for the 4.88%. But from my read, the 10 or 11 pages prior to that are all the things that the department heads and directors and senior staff sort of had put in as requests, meaning the best intentions of the professional teachers and professional educators who we employ with great confidence.
Yes.
To bring us to a point of, of, of how to improve education. So where I'm going with that is, is there any way either now or some other time, or both, to summarize the types of things that, that are left off your budget? And maybe to speak to why in your evaluation of what, what made the final cut versus what frankly didn't make the final cut and what are some priorities into the future? Because one of the things that I know is occurring, and it's a little bit of a, not quite a loaded question, because I am, I do sit on the finance subcommittee, of course, but saying one of the things that obviously we are very interested in working on, not only as a school community, but with the town as well, is some longer-term planning. So the types of things that we're looking at, what may, didn't make the cut, but is important to the high school principal or the middle school principal or the elementary teams that aren't here.
I just want to point out too, on, on the page 38, which is the summary of all the asks.
Yeah.
If you totaled the FTE asks for this budget, it was 14.1 positions that were asked.
Yep.
People, and we, we, that's what we asked for. We said, please tell us what your, your program needs and requires, and if not for this budget, for future budgets. So we, we listened to that and we, we represented here about what was last year versus this year, but the, the positions were well over 14.
So what were some of the positions that, where the ask were 14 and you're proposing five? What are some of the types of positions, the types of needs, again, that didn't make?
So if we just go, if we just go back in the slides.
Please.
To the survey data, right? So we know that we're getting special education support in this budget, right? We know that there's a three FTE add, which is going to equal four people being added as new positions, new money being added to this budget, which is what we're proposing. So any place you see MSN support, that's summarized, where it's summarized in this data, you'll see it here. MSN support, number one for quality teaching. That was highlighted through, that was a number one area of support that was highlighted. Elementary science was a second area of support that is also being kind of prioritized in this budget. Reading specialists is something that's a third priority that we feel at this point in time, we can't, we can't prioritize, right? It's not that it's not critical. It, it is important, but we, we feel like it's not, not now, it's not yet, right? And so we're just trying to have that kind of growth mindset around, okay. We're not saying no, right? And these things, and we maintain, you know this, we maintain these lists and this data because we want to come back around to, to revisit these lists and these priorities. And so when we look at, we say STEAM support, science, technology, engineering, the arts and math. So the elementary science specialist addresses rigorous curriculum and STEAM support. One area that is still a question mark is our SEHL curriculum. You know, one of the things that we're doing, we have a budget for curriculum, and I know that, that Lynn and, and Lynn O'Neil and Karamaro are working together to think about SEHL curriculum and what that might look like next year. So we have an existing budget for that. So the two top priorities on this slide are, are going to, to make it into this budget, right? Things that, that are going to be deprioritized or less priority, made less of a priority are reading specialists and computer science teachers or, or areas to do work there. Other things that are kind of being deprioritized are intervention services and counseling services, math and reading support. And so, and in terms of district priorities, so one of the things that is, that is a hallmark of the last two budgets that we proposed, FY '20 and FY '21, is direct service in the classroom, right? Last year's budget disproportionately was about direct service in the classroom, right? Direct service for students. What is fundamental in this budget proposal is direct service in the classroom. So you can see what's left on the table here, right? District priorities, digital learning specialist, that would be fantastic. Could we benefit? Yes. Could it support teaching, teaching and learning? Yes. You know, student learning time represented in a number of different ways. Is that, you know, worth looking at? Yes. An HR director, we, we talked a little bit about that. A humanities coordinator. I know that a humanities coordinator is a number one priority for Karamaro, but in regard to direct, and we talk about it almost every day, she's wearing the enamel of her molars over there, biting down. And so we, we talked about, you know, humanities coordinator almost every day of this budget cycle, right? Is it possible? How can we do it? And there are some things that just didn't make the, you know, the cut. And so, and, and one of the standards was, you know, what do we need to do to support teachers in the classroom? What does direct service look like? And so that was, that's, that was a priority last year, is a priority this year. And so we do need to think innovatively about moving forward. So you see here, and so, so long story short, I won't go on and on, but we can provide a, a list of, of items that are going to, are going to make the cut and, and a list that are not, that you will see and that we will revisit moving forward. But I think I appreciate the question.
No, and, and I appreciate the, you know, the thoughtful answer. Reason why, well, one of the many reasons why I'm mentioning it is that we have seen, you know, the school administration, the school committee have done a number of surveys in the recent handful of years, leading up to budget presentations and, and budget development. And I think those surveys have only gotten better over the years. And I think the fact that we now have a collection, not only have a collection of data, but we're seeing more and more people participate, because I think people are seeing a value in their opinions being brought into the process. Not only, in some cases, obviously, both from what administrators request and teachers request and others, it won't, it just won't make it from one year to the next because of priorities or, or functionality or affordability or a variety of other needs or challenges. But it's certainly, it's certainly important that we, that we keep that list sort of fresh in people's mind. So being able to share, you know, a list of some kind of the things that, that were expressed to be of value by the community participating in the survey and from your senior team, including principals and, and teachers and others, there's immense value having us as a committee know what that is and the community as a whole knowing what that is and be able to, you know, you know, keep it in the back of our minds as we continue to, to plan, planning on, you know, longer-term need. So, so thank you for that. It would be great to, to see such lists. And I do appreciate that. I mean, just the, the point that Christine pointed out, going from an ask of 14 positions or 14, well, 14 positions to five is, is, is a lot of thoughtful, I'm sure, you know, difficult conversation around what, what is, what is needed and how can we, how can we best make best use of, of both people and resources. My, my next question, which I would like you to comment on tonight, and, and another important page in the document, maybe if, if people pick it up, either as a hard copy or pick it up online, is on page 24, and that has to do with class size.
Yep.
I would like, I know that's not something that you left out of the, your conversation. I, I know you obviously needed to be efficient in this, but that's certainly something that this committee and the numerous, numerous committees before us, as well as obviously our, our staff and our, and our, and our teachers and obviously parents as well, right? The whole community is concerned about class size. Some of the, I'd like, so if you could speak about class size, some of the projections for next year and how we landed in some of those places and what is, what is our comfort level with regard to what we're looking at for, for projected class sizes for next school year? With the big, you know, sort of asterisk appreciating that, you know, kindergarten is still in enrollment stages and I get, I get all the caveats.
Yep.
So, but that's obviously a, a very important matter to the community. Then, so if you could, if you could speak to that a bit?
Yeah, sure. I think, you know, the guidelines that we have in regard to our policy for class size and, and I think the guideline that we have and, and the guidance that we have in our teacher's contract, I think for, you know, in 99% of the areas in our system, we're well within the, the guidance of those parameters. I, I think, you know, one of the things that often comes up when people are talking about class size is student need, right? And, and what I mean by that is, you know, as the needs of children are changing, you know, you can have, I like to say, I like to say in, that, you know, you can have three students that can feel like 30 and, and you can have 30 students that can feel like three, right? When things just, you know, really kind of go really smoothly. There's been a few instances this year where class sizes have been off at, at the middle level, and I think that's been brought to our attention. And I think that teacher leaders and the administration has kind of worked to remedy that. You know, one of the areas that's always a, a challenge for us is specialists, especially in, in music and chorus. You know, numbers are always high in those spaces and not just, not just a little high. So, I mean, there's, you know, you'll have 70 kids in chorus, so the ratio can be 70 to one, you know? And I think the overwhelming majority of our specialists or choral teachers and music teachers are, you know, feel like this is, this is the byproduct of a terrific program. So this is, they feel like it's, it's part of it. But I think by and large, what you see here for projections, if you correlated this list on page 24 to what our, our contract says and what our policy says, I think we're, we're well within the limits of where we should be. There, there's a bubble right now at Dolbear in grade three. And so, you know, we're looking closely at those numbers. And it looks right now, if those class sizes maintain, that that bubble will continue. And what a bubble means is the way our schools, our elementary schools are designed, we have four classes per grade at Dolbear and Woodville. So that's 4K, 41, 42, 43, 44. And at our smaller elementary schools, Greenwood and Walton, we have two classes per grade, 2K, 21, 22, 23, 24. Now, you know, again, some of the challenges at the smaller schools often are service needs or English language learner needs. So that, that presents kind of challenges. But in regard to the, the overall number, the actual class size, I think pretty much across the district, we're within the limits specified in those areas. I don't think that that's going to stop us or preclude us from talking about class size, because I think the needs of students within those numbers are increasing. So I think that that has created a level of complexity and difficulty that has kind of brought up the whole class size, because the number doesn't tell the whole story, if, if that.
No, indeed. I would wholeheartedly support that the number doesn't tell the whole story.
Right.
The needs, as we're talking about in, in other instances, you know, just as you were comparing and making note that last year and this year in the budgets, we're really directing priority and, and resources toward a direct service, direct in, in classroom services.
Right.
Whereas, you know, that's not to say that we're not, you don't understand and appreciate some of the, the needs, the counseling needs and the, and the, the out-of-classroom services, as some of the surveys certainly represent it. So if we do not address those counseling and those student support needs, that's an additional responsibility that gets cast upon, upon the teachers. So in the middle of teaching and learning and academic day is thrust upon them.
Yep.
Counseling and support services and those sorts of needs as well.
Yep.
So I just, I just, I, I call that to, I just call that out, I guess, to. So I just, I just, I, I call that to, I just call that out, I guess, to, to say that out loud, that that's something that, that I, I fully appreciate, have been part of your deliberations, but I think as the community now looks at this over the course of the next two weeks or so, in earnest, leading up to next Wednesday's public hearing and then our vote two weeks from now, you know, those are the type of things that we need to be able to have as a community in, in balance. That as we, as we look at some of these things and prioritize others, it still increases the demand upon, upon what the classroom teacher is expected to do.
Yep.
And I think, you know, class size, the number of, the number of youngsters in a room doesn't tell the whole story, even though if we're staying within or down, or, or being respectful and mindful of a number, that doesn't speak to, to the, to the demands of that classroom or of that, of that particular teacher. So, but I think so, that's an important page for the community to, to be looking at. The next thing is on page 22, which is, which has become a favorite page of mine over the years. Just a call to the community's attention and the, and the committee's attention, what a historical view of the community's support for public education has been. Let me first say how, how grateful we all need to be as, you know, school committee members and as school leaders, but as parents and homeowners and taxpayers and everything else that everyone sitting in this table and everyone in this community is as well, how grateful we are to the town and, and to the taxpayers for the type of support and type of needs that we have demonstrated and hopefully we as a school leaders have demonstrated both need and, and application and, and success. And we, you know, there has been a varying history over the last 20 years as the, as the state of the town and the economy at, at large is able to support. But I think this type of request that you've brought forward tonight is quite, quite reasonable and quite responsible, both in terms of meeting educational needs and fiscal needs that our community can support. If we look at the, the average across this, across this historical data, it's 3.4% is the, the average across these 20, 22 years. And that's, and that's with a high of, of, of 11% as we all love to talk about, or some love to talk about the 11% year, that's a high. But then let's not forget the low years that brought us with, with budget cuts. So my point in that is, is to express a deep appreciation to the community for its support of education over the years. We haven't been able to do the type of things we've been able to do with, with advancements and, and, and teaching staff and technology and, and facilities and resources and salaries, while at the same time being able to provide something that is both modest and responsible. And I thank you guys for that work as well because that's no easy feat to take us from, for what you truly believe as education leaders to something that obviously is, is, is within reason, within more affordable range.
Yes, we added page 22 for a historical kind of look because, you know, one of the things that I think needs to be ever present in kind of taking a long view and looking at budgets is it takes moments, literally moments, to undo what has taken years to build. You know, when you have, when you have, you know, zeros, 0% increases or negative percent increases, where you have to lay teachers off, where you have to cut programming, where you can't provide service for students, you know, it, it takes years to build effective programming, right? So, you know, teachers make up a community, right, that support students, right? And so if you look at, for example, language-based programming, you know, it's not just the language-based teacher that supports those programming, it's a whole school of teachers that support those students, right? And so it, and so this is really a, a critical piece because, you know, and which goes back to our, our philosophy piece around, you know, we want to create year-over-year sustainable budgets so that we don't have to make cuts. And I understand that, you know, the conversations that go along with that and I understand the 11.4% that is often where people start to reference how much schools quote cost when, you know, that 11.4% allowed us to open Post Academy, right, which I spoke about when I started my presentation. It allowed us to provide full day K. It, it allowed us, you know, to open Doyle Early Learning Center. So we, so we opened new schools, right? So this wasn't just money that was infused into teacher salaries, you know, if only, right? You know, it's not, not quite that way, right? And, and it's, it's a distinction that's never clearly made and I, and it, it kind of concerns me sometimes that it's not. You know, when we look at the fire department's budget and they get a new fire truck, we don't say, hey, you guys got a 28% last year because we're lumping a fire truck into their, into their overall budget. And, and that's what happens when we look at that 11.4% in conjunction with the overall cost of the budget, right? You know, it, it's just not as simple as that type of presentation. But, but I think your, your, your points are really very important and I hope that we can kind of keep those at the center of a lot of our conversations moving forward.
And, and my, my final two cents with this for now is exactly to the couple of points that you rattled off and maybe even the handful more that could be inclusive on the list since those days, the type of things that the school, our school leadership in, in the last, say, eight to 10 years have asked for and the school committees have supported and ultimately the community has supported. The types of things that we've been able to do in a responsible and appropriate way to, to raise the bar in education. Still more work to do, there always will be. I don't think will ever be done. But nonetheless, the type of things that we've been able to use those resources for in a responsible way, like the things she's liked.
Yeah.
Opening the Doyle and opening Post and providing more resources, providing more special education resources and more regular ed resources.
Yeah.
And, and let's not forget, in the course of this time, we're also reducing fees, reducing athletic fees, we're reducing fees for, for, for programs that students should have every opportunity to be part of. So there's a larger, there's a larger picture that goes into, that goes into these type of things that have been part of what I would consider to be a successful line of, of budget planning in the last handful of years that, that has really led to some very responsible budgets with increases, no doubt. I appreciate that and I don't, and I'm grateful. But I think this continues that tradition and probably expands it in, in, in a new way. And I want to thank you and your team for, for bringing us to this point and am very hopeful that the community will be thoroughly engaged in the next two weeks with our public hearing next Wednesday and, and then our vote in two weeks from now. So thank you for, thank you for the time.
I just have one, one note, kind of on what Tom was saying. For the community, when they are going through this booklet, if, you know, I'm starting on page 26 and 27, it's per school. So you can see what the asks were per school, which I think is helpful for people to review as well. That obviously doesn't include some of the central office things and, and stuff like that, but at least.
A line there for that as well?
Yeah, just per, per school. I think it's helpful for the community to see what's, some of the asks were from the principals when reviewing this.
And I think if I may just follow up on that, if I may, Mr. Chair, that one of the things that has become more useful over recent years is this type, this type of formatting and certainly the superintendent, the business manager can make the formatting as, as they will, but continuing a format that has been very transparent. I think we've led, we've led up to a ever-increasing transparent. As you said at the onset, it's a, it's a big document, it's a 40, you know, we're, we're in the, you know, 40, $43 million budget range. It's not, it's not a small amount of time to go into, to study it, but it's also not full of, 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 you know, bureaucratic jargon. It's if you're, if you're interested to get into it, the information is here and it's, I think it's pretty transparent to the, to the, to the, to the reader. But I'm sure if not, I'm sure you'd be open to emails or, or phone calls about, about that or come to the public hearing. But anyways, thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we've got a little reading and studying to do, so moving on.
So moving on on my list, one of the things that I wanted to talk about this evening was our Medco program and a position. We have, we, we've received an amendment to our Medco grant and we have funds available to create a middle school position. And, and one of the things that I realized is that I shared the, the job description with Chris as a Google Doc, but I didn't share it with the committee. So I apologize for that and I will get that to you. And so, and maybe, do you think it's probably most prudent to move that to the next meeting?
Well, why don't you describe the position and, and the funding for it?
Sure.
And then if people want to wait, they can, but.
So, so this position, I want to be clear, is a grant-funded position. This is not part of our local budget, this is a grant-funded position. And we have a director at the high school, we have support at elementary, not a director at elementary, we have support, but we don't at the middle school, right? And the number of students that we have at the middle school, I want to say, we're probably at 26 students. I'm looking at Rick. Yeah. So, you know, we're at 26 students. One of the things that we had talked about is really trying to have, to hire someone to come in to, to be kind of an academic support, academic advisor for students. And so it's not, you know, just a support person. There, there will be some leadership responsibilities, there'll be some supervisory responsibilities for student, for their students during the day and also some academic kind of parts of their work that they need to help support students with. So we feel like it's been a deficit for us for a number of years. We haven't had the resources to address this. We do. This job description was created by Glavia Smith, our new director of our Medco program. It was done in conjunction with some administrative support from the Medco office in Boston. Cara Morrow has worked on this, Christine Buffagnat has worked on this, and so I've even had a little bit of a run at it and, and contributed a little bit. So we feel like this is, what's that?
Just, I'm sure, just a little, right?
Yeah, and so, but we really feel like this would be just a really great support for our students and we were just seeking the, the support of, of the school committee to, to do this, to post this position and to hire.
And, and this is something that we have talked about in previous meetings, especially when Ms. Smith was here, that, you know, she felt as though her, her time being split between the high school and the middle school was, was really not servicing the students as well as it should be. Since it doesn't have a budget implication, I'm, I'm trying to think aloud, do we need to vote on it or is that something you just do and you're letting us know? Any opinions here?
Mr. Chair, I would, I would suggest that we would, that we would vote on it because it's an add into the overall staffing complement of the district.
So would you like to, we can make a motion or we can have, have a, the description in your next packet and we'll vote at the next meeting?
May I ask you, what is the timing? Like, is there someone?
Do it right away.
You'd like to post this position and, and hire before the end of the school year?
Yes, sir.
Is this September? So we're getting money in FY20?
Correct.
And anticipating hiring someone before FY20 is over?
Yes.
So.
And I think it could be fantastic for the spring because, you know, having a little academic support for students in the afternoon would be a great help to the students. It also could set us up as students move into the summer, for us to really think about what, how we might be able to support academically over the summer as well. So.
So with, with that, with that in mind and, and some, some time on this that, for the sake of waiting for two weeks, I would suggest, Mr. Chair, and offer the motion that we approve the superintendent's recommendation to post and appoint a Medco middle school position as funded by the Medco grant.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion?
Yeah, just wanted to ask a clarifying question on the hiring process. So how involved is Medco and, and what is our portion in the hiring process? I assume that they also have some say since the Medco students are serviced.
Yeah.
So obviously Glavia, but then at the state level, are they also invited, involved in the hiring process or is it really?
Grants come to the district. Districts employ those people individually. So the, all of that is done at the district level.
Okay.
Right? And so there, there would be no one from, for example, the Medco office in Boston who would participate in the hiring process.
Okay.
Glavia does have a mentor who we're providing through, through the district, like we are for all of our new leaders. And I'm sure she would have a hand in kind of joining us and helping us as well. But that's it.
They may certainly recommend somebody apply.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, imagine the field is a little broader than, you know, when we're, we're hiring in district for other things.
Yeah.
Okay, good, thank you.
I do think it's in our best interest to let you move, you know, quickly with it because it's a position you really want to fill immediately.
Yep.
Yeah.
So motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor? That would be unanimous?
Thank you. And, and the last topic for me is a letter that I shared with you earlier today. This is kind of a highlight of the evening for me actually. The, the letter, I can, I can read the letter so that people at home can hear. I'm, I'm writing to the school committee. Dear school committee, it is my distinct pleasure to announce my decision to appoint Matthew Carter as principal of the Woodville School, removing the, the tag interim title and assuming a longer-term role as principal of Woodville. Matt has garnered experience over the past year at Woodville and has demonstrated that he is an excellent match for this position. His collaborative work with teacher teams, providing interventions for students and his work with student data has been noteworthy. As impressive has been his ability to connect with students, faculty and staff while leading the school day-to-day. Matt is a knowledgeable instructional leader with outstanding understanding of school culture. He's an excellent communicator, engages all stakeholders to develop a positive school community grounded in short, shared core values. Matt will adeptly maintain the helm at Woodville with the support of his assistant principal, who's been really, they've been a terrific match for one another, that's Marina Zortzis, as well as an exceptionally, exceptionally strong teaching faculty and, and PTO. So this is me kind of announcing that we're moving forward to appoint Matt and to take the interim tag off. As part of the process, we've met with parents, we've met with all the faculty, we've also had the opportunity to meet with students, which was tremendous. One of our second grade young, young students, a young girl, explained to me that Mr. Carter is super kid-friendly. And he is exceptional and one of our fourth grade students shared, you know, you know, you really don't want to get in trouble. It's not because he's mean, but you really just don't want to disappoint him. And so I, I think that this speaks to the connections that he's made at that school and, and I'll be honest with you, I feel like we hit the lottery here and, and it's, 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 you know, it's great to be able to move forward, to support Matt and his leadership and working here for us. So that's where we're at.
Have you negotiated a new, a contract yet or are you?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
No. So.
Great. I think Matt's done a wonderful job. I've, I've had nothing but positive feedback from, from parents that have interacted with him.
Yeah.
Okay. Would that be it?
Yep, I'll send, I'll send a similar letter to the community tomorrow and I'll also do, kind of send a note over to Mark Sardella.
Great.
So, yep, that's it for me, thank you.
So moving on for subcommittee reports, we've kind of hit most of those already. Finance of facilities, we haven't had much in the way of facilities otherwise, other than the fact that April 1 is quickly approaching and so that that'll be a, a major move and our budget hearing will be, you know, moving along. It's, it's nice to kind of move off budget preparation and move into some facilities concentration. concentrations. Labor and personnel.
We have been meeting with the teachers' association for the last couple of weeks and then had some strategy meeting ourselves. I think we're landing in some very, very good places. We've had some really constructive conversations and some constructive, some constructive back-and-forth and am pleased to report that and also looking forward to, perhaps I would agree with the superintendent that we're, that we're, that we're likely to be soon in a good place. But certainly we'll be reporting to the full committee and the community when, when that occurs. Well, our next negotiation is tomorrow night and looking forward to, looking forward to another good meeting.
Student services?
We have not met, we just worked on all that data for the surveys and now it's kind of being reviewed and put into place.
Okay. And policy, I think we've kind of done that, right?
Yep, yeah, we don't, we have another meeting, twenty-fourth, prior to the, to the meeting on the twenty-fourth.
Okay. Our next meetings will be next Wednesday, the eighteenth, for our budget hearing at seven thirty here at WCAT. There's a single-line item for that agenda, which will be just the budget hearing. And then our next regularly scheduled school committee meeting will be on Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, again here at WCAT. Any comments, Mr. Markham?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm fine, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Fortier? Mrs. Vayer?
I've got one.
Okay.
Quick. I just wanted to share some statistics from some of the work that's going on related to the Wakefield Sustainability Committee and the work that's going on at the schools. So, for two, for the first two months of the zero-waste cafeteria work that's been going on at the elementary schools, the schools have collected more than forty-seven hundred food items in two months, which have been redistributed to families. So, what's happening there in the elementary schools is when kids aren't opening up their fruit pack or their, you know, some, some part of the food isn't eaten and is still packaged, they, the volunteers that are in there are helping the kids kind of put that into a bin, it goes into a refrigerator and it gets picked up and it gets redistributed. Forty-seven hundred food items. We've also, I thought I had a number for how much we had, how many pounds we had composted. So, they've, they're estimating that in one school year, we will compost nineteen thousand pounds of food waste, I think is what that says. And so, there's, there's really, I just wanted to share that there's really good work going on around this for food rescue and composting. It's all happening at the elementary schools. We're, we're not yet, there yet at, at the middle school and high school, but the, the hope is that composting will be in, in our, all of the school's futures. But the, there is a dedicated group of volunteers that are helping out at the elementary schools to help kids kind of understand where to put things and how to kind of handle their items that can be rescued and those items that can be composted. And we are making a switch to, right now, silverware comes in these like little plastic packs that have a napkin, right? And they're going to get rid of those because what's happening is the kid opens that and uses the spork and doesn't use the straw and doesn't use the napkin. Getting rid of those and we're going to have single-serve utensils for kids to use so that there's no additional packaging and, so that's one of the things that Danielle was able to kind of, the food, the woman who's running for food services is, that's a shift that she's been able to very quickly make, which will reduce waste in many, many capacities, which is nice. And then I just wanted to say, I, my, I took my kids to the senior show. We didn't know any of those kids. We knew, actually, we knew one kid, the, the gentleman or the high schooler that coached my son's basketball team. Ryan Marcus was highly involved and we went because we wanted to see him, but we also just kind of wanted to see and Tom was there and it was really quite an entertaining evening. They can do some really great impersonations of some teachers that it's, I don't know very many of the high school teachers, but I got to see a couple of impersonations by students and they just did a really, really nice job. It was a really funny evening and I was, I was glad that we went as a family. So, good, I, I was hoping that the girls were going to be here to, to be able to say that to them because two of the girls were in it, but they're gone. Anyway, that's it for me.
Okay.
No comments? No comments.
Okay.
I just have a few bills to sign.
Okay.
Thank you all, sir.
Okay. Well, with that, I would like to adjourn our meeting. Okay, have a good night.